I think you're bouncing again.
Okay, I just unmuted.
Okay, it's five thirty, we're gonna get started here. So, good afternoon, everyone. It is five thirty on Tuesday, July sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. Welcome to the Sun Prairie Committee of the Whole Meeting. Before we, before we take roll, I do want to note, Elena, that Alder Polinski is excused today. So with that, could you please do a roll call?
Bulleye? Here. Crombie?
Here.
Jacobs?
Here.
Yokeish?
Here.
McElroy?
Here.
Polinski is excused. Stevens?
Here.
And Stalker?
Here, thank you. We have seven of our eight council members. Uh, next item is the approval of the minutes from Committee of the Whole Meeting, June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Seems like it's been forever.
I'll move to approve them.
McElroy seconds.
Okay, we have a move and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that passes. Thank you. Okay. I'm jumping out of my phone. There, now I'm in my laptop finally. Okay, next item is citizen appearance, public comment. Do we have anyone? Is that Don in command there?
Yes, I did email you the, uh, Survey Monkey PDFs.
Okay, thank you. I will jump on those. Okay, it's for...
City Council, Steve.
Yeah.
It's a question on the minutes for City Council.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Your Honor. Okay, so we'll move on to Council Liaison and Committee Member Reports. Does anyone have anything to report? Alder Yokeish?
Uh, yes, I'd like to report on the Parks Recreation and Forestry Commission.
Please do.
Okay, at the Parks Recreation and Forestry Commission meeting in June, information was presented to the Commission on a proposal to create a trail on sixteen acres of land along Token Creek as part of the Chloris Development Proposal and that it be ca- considered for Parkland Credit. In staff's judgment, the property presents an opportunity to continue an existing multi-use trail and contribute to a future regional trail network between the Village of Windsor and the Town of Bristol. Uh, this proposal will be brought back to the Commission in the future. The Commission also discussed the lighting of trails. There was interest in lighting especially for commuter trails, and Kristin Grissom will come back to the Commission with a proposal. Also on the agenda was acquiring additional ice rink liner systems to increase the number of ice rinks this coming winter. And then finally, the Commission discussed the Wetmore Splash Pad, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to again thanks the Tubbs family for their generous donation to this project. It was a wonderful ribbon cutting ceremony on June thirtieth, and our community will be enjoying the new Wetmore Park for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alder Yokeish. Yeah, I'll just do a quick, uh, report on the Colonial Club. We had, uh, very good turnout. We sold out of all of the strawberries, five hundred quarts in, I think about an hour and fifteen minutes. And, um, the, uh, people who attended were very, very happy to get out and about again and enjoy a wonderful strawberry fest. So I thank the Colonial Club for great job on that. Okay, any other committee reports? Okay, see none, we are going to move on to unfinished business, and that is consideration discussion of possible action of the two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and thirty-one Capital Improvement Plan. And I do want to say to our attendees for, uh, the Boys and Girls Club and others who may be on for the redistricting task force and such, the plan is to limit our discussion this evening to the first fifteen minutes. So we'll be talking about the CIP for fifteen minutes, no longer. And if we have time at the end, we will come back to it. If we do not, it will remain an open item for future agenda. We, and I've gotten the, uh, okay that we do not have to table this. It will just be an open agenda item that we will come back. Alder Crombie, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, let's see, I'm off mute, right? Okay, good. Uh, so I just, um, when it comes to, there is one item that wasn't on the Capital Improvement Plan that I was want, or I would want, I want to make a motion. And for two thousand and twenty-two, the, under the park items, back in February, we, our Parks Recreation and Forestry Commission had talked about this item, and it was a trail groomer for the Sheen Park, and it's twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And, um, I believe Kristen's online too, if you have any questions to ask her about this. Um, basically, you know, with COVID, there was a lot of people that had asked for Sheen Park to have, for, you know, people that, um, you know, that go cross-country skiing. And, um, so it's in addition to a machine to groom cross-country ski trails and other parks and recreation functions. During winter months, this unit will pull a groomer attachment for the ski trails. And during the non-winter months, it will be used for general parks and facilities maintenance procedures. So I'd like to make a motion to get this in the CIP for two thousand and twenty-two. Um, you know, this aligns with the quality city services as it provides free access to recreational opportunities and promotes health and wellness in our community.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a second to that? Alder Bulleye?
I recall reading that in the CIP. Was it for a different year? That's what I just wanted to ask.
It's for two thousand and, I, I have it down here, it's for two thousand and twenty-two.
That you're...
Basically through two thousand and thirty-one. I don't, I don't know if Kristen's on and she wants to elaborate on that?
Yeah, she is on. Kristen?
Yeah, I can, um, so yeah, this was at the request of the Park Recreation and Forestry Commission to put this in, and it was actually submitted in the CIP, but somehow it didn't make its way onto the document. Um... But yeah, I can answer any questions about it.
The, I can let you know that the detail sheet is in there. Um, but it didn't make it onto our, our summary sheets, which is what we built all of our, um, debt module, debt forecasts on. And so we're just trying to clean that up.
So if I understand, it's a recommendation, however, it didn't make it to the worksheet or the spreadsheet?
Right.
Okay. Okay, well, we, a motion, is there a second?
I seconded.
Okay, thank you.
So clarification then, is there an actual change, or do we just need to clean that up on our end? Kristen?
We would need to, um, make a motion like we have on the table to add it to two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay.
Okay, so Alder Stevens?
You can move forward, sorry.
Okay, thank you. So as we move through here, I'm gonna look to Mr. Oppenheimer. Uh, we would not be voting at this time on the motions. We'll accumulate all of them, correct?
Well, you would, no, uh, Mr. President, on the amendments, you would vote to, to include those or not. It's the overall approval of the document that you would not...
That's what we're gonna hold off on.
That's correct, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Well, with that being said, um, Elena, could you please read the roll?
Bulleye? Crombie?
Hi.
Jacobs?
Hi.
Yokeish?
Hi.
McElroy?
Hi.
Stevens?
Hi.
Stalker?
Hi. Okay.
Mr. Miss, oh, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Alder Stevens?
Yes, I have a question about Cool Drive, K-U-H-L-E, is the name of the road. Um, I had a constituent reach out actually because she was under the impression that, um, it was slated for sidewalk repair and street reconstruction in twenty-one. And I don't see it in our CIP binder from last year, and I don't see it pushed to twenty-two. Um, so I, I'm trying to find where I can get that information and let them know when that will happen.
I see Mr. Weiss came on.
Yeah, if I may, uh, uh, Alder Stalker.
Sure.
Keel Drive and, and that neighborhood has, has been moved back to two thousand and twenty-seven. Um, so as we look to rebalance and, um, you know, try to tighten up on some of the capital spending in the Streets Division, we did have to stretch out some of those other projects. So currently it is slated for two thousand and twenty-seven, uh, as of right now.
Is there any way to go in and do some sidewalk repair? They are saying that there's some really big heaving near tree roots in particular, and they're really concerned about tripping hazards there.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great point. I think, uh, although it would probably fall underneath the CIP limits for, for twenty-five thousand, um, if you want to send a note to myself and Adam and, and Ben John, I think we can include that in just our general sidewalk maintenance for the year. So if there's specific locations or, or, uh, streets, uh, that's more than helpful to, to narrow that down, so.
She did provide an address, so I'll give that note to you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Alder Yokeish?
Um, I just want to, uh, bring up an issue for consideration. Uh, on page one fifty-seven is the, uh, pedestrian safety improvements, and I see on there that, uh, it's a hundred thousand a year, and, uh, uh, certainly this is an important priority of something we wanted to address. And just wondering if, uh, uh, if anybody wanted to comment on, uh, you know, uh, where that's at with the task force and, and whether that's gonna be sufficient, or if in the future we'd, we'd maybe think of additional resources. It just seems like an important area, and I'm not making any motion to increase anything right now, but if anybody would like to comment on that. Thank you.
So it looks like Mr. Schleicher and Mr. Weiss are ready to answer her.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So we have that money, um, set aside for, you know, projects that come up. We're not exactly sure what might be prioritized in the next ten years. I know Tom's identified in, in two thousand and twenty-two for next year to use that hundred thousand, um, as part of the, the Dewey Street Project to make some upgrades along, uh, West Main Street between, or East Main Street, I'm sorry, between, uh, Dewey and Grove. And then going forward, um, as the task force continues to work and evaluate data to look for, you know, other spots that may need attention. So it's more of a, um, unrestricted, uh, monies that we can use, um, to identify quick needs, um, in, in our safety to the city. So that, that was the intent of that funding.
Thank you. Alder Crombie, I see you have your hand up.
Oh, yes, um, thank you, Mr. President. So basically, there is in the CIP, there is a re, a street reconstruction for Dover, Harvard, Major, Queens, and Ring Construction, or Reconstruction. And I know that there are many, I think all of us received information from the residents on Major, on Major. And, um, I would like to, it's, this isn't a motion, but I'd like to have an opportunity for those neighbors that would like to participate in one of our CIP meetings to talk about their concerns about that reconstruction over there with sidewalks.
Good point, yes. It's, this being a, most likely a short discussion would probably not be the time for them to show up, however. Um, if you want to invite them to our next working session, I'll make certain that that is a discussion point, and we can, uh, hear their input on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Is that Alder Jacobs or you?
Yeah, I, I have a question. I have a question. So I'm not sure who's gonna take this, Adam, I guess. Um, on page seventeen of the supporting documents as part of the agenda, there's a, it's, it's two, five, seven, three, zero, one. It's a Public Works Patrol Truck for two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Can you tell me anything about what that is? I'm just asking because I simply don't know.
Sure, the patrol trucks are the large dump trucks that are used for snow plowing.
And that's, that's one unit for two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars?
Yeah, one full-size truck with all the attachments and plows, yeah. They're about a quarter million dollars, yeah.
Wow, we need a lot of Boy Scouts and shovels. Wow, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? We're still within our fifteen-minute allocation. Okay, if not, um, we will move on to our new business, and that is a presentation by the Boys and Girls Club of Dane County. I see Jake on, I think I saw Dr. Gee was on. Uh, Jake, are you gonna lead this one on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Try to screen share here. Okay. Thumbs up, everyone see? Presentation?
Yes.
All right, well, thanks for having me today. Um, I was reached out just to, you know, provide an update on Boys and Girls Club and what we've been up to in the last year. A lot has happened. Um, everyone knows we, uh, um, opened, um, in February of two thousand and twenty, and we're only open for two years, or for two months, and then had to close again. So, uh, just want to go through some of the things that, that we've been doing and, and happy to answer any questions at the end. So when the pandemic hit, you know, we wanted to find a way with our clubs closed how we still could be of service, um, to the Sun Prairie community. So, uh, the first thing we did is we provided testing sites. Uh, we did six testing sites across Dane County, and one of them, uh, we did hold at the, uh, McKenzie Club, and throughout Dane County, we did over a thousand, uh, tests with our goal of bringing these, um, opportunities to neighborhoods and to families who may not have access, right? Um, and then additionally, in this last spring, when the vaccine came out, uh, we held the location, vaccine, uh, site location at the McKenzie Family Boys and Girls Club, and we administered two hundred and ninety-nine, uh, vaccines in partnership with, uh, Fischberg Family Pharmacy, came out and provided that. So, uh, really happy we were able to provide that, uh, to the community. And then with all the events you're gonna see here today, um, PPE material has been distributed at everything we do, masks, hand sanitizers. Again, just what the goal is, whoever doesn't have access and wanted access, that we would provide them. So food programs, we realized that was another issue, uh, with a lot of our families and neighborhoods that we serve. Um, so we hosted, um, three major, uh, meals, one around Thanksgiving, one around the winter holidays and Christmas, um, and one in the spring, uh, around Easter time, to basically provide a full, free holiday meal for families to take home to serve however many, uh, members they have in their family. So our largest one was a winter holiday meal. We served eighty-two families, feeding three hundred and eighteen people. Um, and we've just had a lot of success with those drive-through meals, meals, making sure that, uh, families have access. And additionally, we made sure all of our kids, uh, that we served in the club went home with, uh, holiday gifts as well. Um, and then we have a Meals to Go program. So every Tuesday since I believe, uh, last winter, um, we provide a Meals to Go program. Basically, they're pre-cooked meals, um, that families can drive up, uh, and get. They serve up to five or six, uh, people. Um, and we partner with Little Johns and Madison and Just Veggies to provide, uh, those meal options. And that picture right there is actual meals that we were serving, um, to families and still are. Um, and then QBE is a big partner of ours, um, who's allowing us with funding to continue to do the service through the summer. So again, that's, that's, uh, um, every Tuesday, and eighty-two families are currently registered for it, and whoever signs up for meal each week can get one. Um, and then we have a picture here of actually some volunteers, uh, local Sun Prairie people who came and helped volunteer at our winter holiday giveaway. So we also hosted some family fun nights. Uh, we did one in this, uh, one in the fall and one in the spring. Um, forty members showed up, uh, family members, just to anyone in the community. Uh, basically, we opened up our parking lot. We have a lot of space. We did crafts. We played music. Uh, we've got pumpkins that families could take home and carve for free. Um, and I thought here are some adorable pictures of, uh, that day, so. So virtual programming. So in our, in our five-year plan, um, starting in two thousand and twenty, we were supposed to have a virtual program by two thousand and twenty-three. Um, and the pandemic happened, so we needed it by March. So we put together a virtual programming just with the resources we had. And since March, we provided eight hundred and eighteen videos, lessons, and resources, uh, to our families, and I know in the community that can all be found on our website. Um, and then additionally, everyone here knows about the Virtual Center next door, uh, that we will be, uh, a, a project starting here shortly. So we've currently created the Ad-Hoc Committee. Um, we have to be very diligent on following the federal guidelines with, uh, community development block grants. Um, in the grant, grant process, um, we have, um, identified a chair. His name is Mark Widerheft, and he's the current, he's a current board member of our Metro Board. Um, and he is the Industrial Director for a company named Gilson. Um, and we hope to start begin meeting with contractors in July and August to explore, um, completion date for late two thousand and twenty, early two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, we've done a lot of partnerships locally as well, so I wanted to highlight a few of them. One we're really proud of is our relationship with Prairie Phoenix Academy, or PPA. Um, so it was our, um, responsibility this year to provide community engagement and provide some outside programming, uh, for the students at Prairie Phoenix Academy. So we brought in Madam, and they brought in, uh, these things called microbits, they're mini computers. Basically, it teaches kids the beginning of computer programming, and Madam specifically focuses on programs for girls and youth of color, uh, age six through twelve. Um, so that was a great, uh, four-week program that we did. We also brought in Sun Prairie Media Center. Jeff Robbins was great to work with, um, where some of their teachers did a commercial recording and video editing, so students got some exposure on that. Um, and then we brought in our actual education team and other branch of Boys and Girls Club to do a program called Career Launch. Basically, it teaches soft skills, resume building, um, and gets them ready for the workforce. Um, and we were very excited to announce that three of the PPA students in high school, um, qualified and were awarded, uh, one of our paid internships that we're hosting this summer. So three kids are currently in that program. So we also have a lot of local partnerships of businesses that I wanted to highlight. Um, all the businesses you see here, starting with the Bank of Sun Prairie, have found ways to partner with programming, partner with fundraising, uh, partner with volunteering. Um, and we're super grateful, um, that they've been a part of what we've done in the past year and a half. Um, and Bank of Sun Prairie, obviously, you know, they were supporters in getting us our playground, um, and they have volunteer days. So once a year, they come and help clean up and do some landscaping around, and we're really excited to have some of their employees come out. So again, I just want to shout out Bank of Sun Prairie, QBE, Slarity Staffing Solutions, Palmer Johnson Power Systems, American Family, uh, Rotary of Sun Prairie, um, OFR, and, uh, United Methodist Church, and our Saviors Lutheran Church just around the corner from the clubs. Um, and then Full Mile Beer and Kitchen were also huge supporters. So we have a local board that we put together as well. Um, our purpose of this board, we call the Sun Prairie Action Council, is to provide, to help us grow roots in Sun Prairie, right? We need to under, for us to fully understand what the needs of Sun Prairie and what services we need to provide. We want to build a local representation, um, of people who live here, work here, raise families here. Uh, and this is a really strong group I'm very proud to be a part of, um, who are currently leading the way in a lot of these efforts to see who do we need to know? Who can we partner with? Um, and they've just been amazing to work with, and, and Joy Matthews leads this group. Um, she's our chair, and she currently works at, uh, QBE. So our after-school program. So we are a licensed childcare program. Uh, we were closed, um, and we reopened in October. So since then, we have served forty-five youth. We can only serve seventeen at a time, um, due to public health guidelines for childcare centers, licensed childcare centers. Um, it has to do not with square footage, it has to do with staffing, and but even more specifically has to do with bathrooms, uh, availability. So because of the amount of restrooms we have, we currently can have thirty-six, so we're a few more hires away to be able to increase our cap. Um, but we currently, our average daily attendance, uh, we call our ADA is at seventeen, so our summer camp is going strong, and we have kids showing up. Program starts at eight-thirty, and kids are there at eight-fifteen knocking on the door, so we're super happy to have them. Um, but we do programming all day. We're open right now for the summer, eight-thirty, uh, AM to five-thirty, uh, in the evening. And we do programming all day based around character and leadership, education, uh, health and wellness, sports and recreation, and the arts. Um, also in the last year, we've got these two installed, both shout-outs to Bank of Sun Prairie, uh, our beautiful playground that we got installed and had a grand opening, and a really cool van wrap that got some of our kids on the outside of it. Preschool program. So we still have a program, um, um, on the lower level that needs to be open. Um, again, with all the license and guidelines and proper staffing, uh, we are very excited to announce that we have hired our new Director of the Preschool. Her name is Danielle Burdick. She's got, I believe, fourteen years of experience working with youth. Um, she was previously, uh, previously an Assistant Club Director at our TAF location in Madison. Um, super motivated, just joined the McKenzie team, uh, last week, and we're very excited for her to start leading the charge for us to be open prior to fall of two thousand and twenty-one. Um, so then some community partners of other nonprofits and organizations that are doing programming within our clubs. So Community School is obviously a huge partner of ours. Um, we are currently, um, involved in the community conversations that are happening, uh, in Sun Prairie. Um, and then just having the access to elementary schools, uh, around where we serve and, and, and being, having access and, and being able to share our programming information for families that could, that could utilize it. Um, we have a great, uh, uh, relationship currently with Northside Elementary School. Um, they actually found funding for a walking school bus. Transportation is always, always very important. If kids can't get to our building, right, then, um, we can't have the impact that we want to have with them. Um, so Northside Elementary volunteers and community staffs, um, school staff walk kids over, uh, during the school year every single day. So they have a safe, uh, and affordable option to do so, which is free. Um, we hope to expand our programming with Prairie Music Academy. And actually, we have a, a grant out there we're really hoping for, um, where they can bring in, um, Prairie Music Academy to do some programming, music and arts programming with our kids. Even if it doesn't work, we're gonna find a way to partner, uh, with them, because that's, uh, one of our pillars. I want to make sure our kids have access to, to the arts. Uh, previously, we, we, we partnered with Sun Prairie Media Center, and they have been open to any, any type of programs that, that we've thrown their ways, so we're excited to continue partnering with them. We have a brand-new garden club. If you've driven by lately, you can see our, um, Above Planters right there. Um, our kids helped put together, and it's beautiful, and we have some couple, couple local, um, including my mother, volunteers helping, uh, run the garden and doing it with the kids and learning about mulch and, um, hopefully getting a... We have one stock of corn, so we're really excited, um, about the harvest we're gonna have this year. Um, but yeah, it's just a really great program, and it's actually led by Joel and McKenzie of the McKenzie Family, um, and we're really excited to have her involved. And then lastly is our biggest, uh, collaboration and new is, uh, with Sun Prairie Deca. So Sun Prairie Deca has been a huge asset, um, just in this past six months. Um, they've been volunteering at our, uh, family fun nights. Uh, they provided, uh, volunteers for the COVID vaccine clinics. They've ran other fundraising events, uh, with downtown LeBide, um, with Full Mile, uh, Beer Company and Kitchen, um, and recently the largest one, and I'm hoping you've all heard of it, but our Sun Prairie, uh, Movie Night, we wanted to host a couple weeks back, but unfortunately it was rescheduled, uh, due to the poor weather. But we are going to be having a, uh, movie night on the Bank of Sun Prairie Stadium at Ashley Field. It's gonna be free, so it's accessible. Uh, we're gonna have food trucks. There is activities on the, on the football field for kids to do for a couple hours beforehand. We're gonna watch Aladdin. There's gonna be concessions. There's gonna be movie trivia, and Deca did all the work. They are incredible. Uh, i- if you haven't followed the, uh, Sun Prairie Deca Facebook page, uh, they've been putting updates on there. They got, uh, mascots to do informational, uh, advertisements about like, uh, outdoor movie etiquette and just some really incredible stuff. And, uh, it's gonna be really great, and we have rescheduled for August seventh, so they'll be pushing out that new information. But, um, we had over nine hundred people, uh, interested or going, uh, on the Facebook event, so we're really excited and just want to make sure, cross our fingers, we have good weather so that we can have a really great, free, family-friendly, uh, event in Sun Prairie. Okay, uh, and then we also held the, another fundraiser in November. It's called the Give for Good Auction. Uh, we couldn't do anything in person, so, um, um, the Sun Prairie Action Council helped put together, um, a bunch of local businesses to help put, put some packages together where people could bid on. Um, and the amount of support we had was, was really incredible. Uh, and then upcoming, uh, we're excited in, uh, in August here. We're gonna have Dr. Linda Applegate. She's a Harvard professor, provides, uh, professional development around, uh, business innovation, leadership, and business analytics, uh, to our staff, and I just want to thank the mayor, uh, who'll be hosting the welcome reception when she does come. And then I just want to introduce our leadership team. I know everyone knows, uh, Michael Johnson and Dr. Gee, um, but there's a lot of people behind the scenes who really lead all of the efforts we do in Sun Prairie. I want to give them shout-outs. Uh, again, our Vice President of Operations, my supervisor Tiffany Loomis, um, and then our two club directors, Brent Ray and Daniel Burdick, who are currently pictured there, and they took that picture for me about one hour ago. So thanks, Elena, for doing that. Um, a- and thank you for your time. I also want to point out that we just appreciate the partnership with the city of Sun Prairie and hope to continue. And, and again, we get new regulations still every twenty-eight days, and every time that we can do more, we're gonna do more. And we're really excited how far we've come, um, since February of two thousand and twenty, and, uh, just super happy and proud to be part of this community. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jake. I see Joy Matthews is out in the, uh, attendee list. Does she want to speak? And if so, uh, Don, if you could promote Joy to be a speaker, please?
Joy is coming in right now.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Joy. Oh, Dr. Giza, too. You're back. Do either of you wish to speak? Welcome.
Thanks. I would just simply say that it has been a great year with the Boys and Girls Club and their involvement with our youth in Sun Prairie. And we're looking forward to moving beyond COVID and all of the additional things that that they can do. But I will also say thank you to the city for putting the splash pad in and the excellent playground. I heard that the kids love being able to walk down the street and and use that beautiful park. So thank you.
Thank you, Joy. Dr. Gee, would you like to say anything?
I just wanted to say thank you, you know, as we looked over the PowerPoint and the presentation and sort of the evolution of how we've gotten to where we are today. We feel like we're just getting started. Just want to say thank you to all of you and for your support and as we continue to grow out in the area, we want to come back, provide updates and give you our opportunities to engage in however you might want to. But definitely keep you updated to our works. We have great leadership, you know, Jake has been with the organization a while and really has grown in his leadership role. So we're just truly thankful for him and his leadership. And he's been doing amazing since he's been out in Sun Prairie. So we we sort of feel like we're just getting started and just wanted to thank you. And hopefully you all will continue to be a part of this journey as we try to develop our youth in the area. So thank you.
Well, thank you. And thank you for this update. I see the mayor has come on. I'm not sure, Paula, were you coming on to say a few words and then Alder Crombie?
No, I wasn't coming on to say anything. I was just wanting to act alert to this. I was working on a on another item for our meeting. So but I am pleased to see them all here. Jake and Dr. Gee, and of course, our friend Joy that we see all the time. So it's great having Boys and Girls Club. I don't know when the reception is going to be for the lady coming from Harvard. So but you know, we are committed to doing that, but where it's going to be and when we don't know.
Just kidding.
No, and I'll just say, we just met with her on Friday and asked if she was open to it. And she said she was. I know she'll be here two days in August. So Paul will circle back with you on what that might look like. But she was very agreeable to entertaining that. So we sort of got her commitment that yes, she would be available for it. So we can talk about what that looks like.
We can do it out here in Sun Prairie, Doctor. Thank you.
Okay, Alder Crombie.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank you for your presentation tonight. We're looking, I I am looking forward, which I'm sure everybody on the council is to hear more about your programs and the work with your community partners because collaboration is what it's all about. And in the beginning, Jake, you had talked about the meals to go. And I was a little, maybe I just want to make sure I understand this. You talked about Thanksgiving, Christmas and Easter meals. And then you talked about other meals to go. I believe it was eighty two families. Was that presentation just on Sun Prairie families that in the beginning there?
Yes, all those numbers are strictly for.
Okay, I just wasn't sure at first because I knew that Madison was doing it too. So I just wanted to make sure that that was just Sun Prairie families. So thank you.
Jake, I have a question. Prior in your presentation, the slide prior to the PPA discussion, just some clarification, you had made note that I think you'd said something is coming up at the end of twenty twenty and we're beyond that. So I just wanted clarification on if you could pull that slide up. Maybe maybe it's the renovation of the center.
Yes, that is correct. So our hope is still we're working through the CDBG grant process for the virtual center where our funds are coming from. So we're putting together an ad hoc committee so that we have experts on board to make sure we follow all of the rules that go along with federal dollars. And again, it's led by one of our current Boys and Girls Club board members. And it was also in that field. And we hope to again, start this process here very shortly to start getting bids and things July and August so that we can have it completed by the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. And you've kept the neighbors up to date, correct?
Every every month.
That was looking for a fence or something up there. And I haven't, I go by there almost every day and I haven't seen it yet. So I assume you're still kind of in flight and getting everything assembled.
Absolutely.
Very good. Does anyone else have any questions? Alder Yoke.
Well, I don't have a question, but I did want to also state my gratitude for the Boys and Girls Club. Thank you for this presentation today. And and all the work you do in community partnership here in Sun Prairie and throughout Dane County. I keep reading about all the activities throughout Dane County and it's very impressive. And our community in all of Dane County is very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Yoke. Yeah, I definitely echo that. And I can say you're definitely making a difference in a lot of lives. I think that's that's why we're all here. We want to make a difference. And Alder McElroy.
I too want to say that I'm, quite frankly, I don't think I had a full handle on all that you do for the community. It's very impressive. And I'm also incredibly pleased and impressed with the amount of community partners you have. Thank you to all the community partners out there. That is just fabulous.
Yep, exactly. Thank you. Okay, any other remarks before we move on? Okay, hearing none. Jake, Dr. Gee, Joy, always a pleasure. Please come back whenever you have another presentation.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Okay, next item, consideration, discussion, possible action on final recommendations from the Aldermanic District's Task Force Presentation. Don, would you please promote Mr. Connors to be a speaker, I think he from attendee.
And he should be ready.
Oh, thank you, sir. Okay. I think the introduction goes we don't need an introduction for Mr. Connors. He's a familiar face here. So Bill, you're on. Thank you. Would you like to lead this up?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Let me see. Can I let me see if I can share my screen here. Hold on just a moment.
While you're doing that, I guess I'm somewhat surprised that other members of the Task Force didn't join today. I didn't see anybody out in the attendee list.
Yeah, I didn't specifically attempt to recruit anybody else to join us. All right. So thank you, Mr. Council President and all the persons for the opportunity to speak with you about the report of the Alder Person District's Task Force, or it's sometimes called Aldermanic District's Task Force. I think that's technically what it's called. It's probably in the statute called Aldermanic Districts, but I try to be, you know, friendlier by by calling it Alder Person's Task Force. The District's Task Force. So what I covered in this section of the report of the Task Force, I wanted to touch on. And that and that's the history of where we came from and where we might be going. So the the village of Sun Prairie was founded back in eighteen sixty eight. And villages elect all of their village trustees at large. And as Sun Prairie started to grow, the village of Sun Prairie, particularly after World War Two, the population started to grow quite rapidly. People within the city, for whatever reason, decided they wanted to have the have it be a city rather than a village. And one of the the things that that being a city rather than a village opened up was the ability to have Aldermanic Districts or Alder Person Districts and be able to have specific Alder Persons represent parts of the city instead of all the people on the council being elected at large. So that was that was one of the important changes that were made was made when the city when it changed from a village to a city in nineteen fifty eight was instead of having a village board with all the trustees elected at large, the the city had from that time in nineteen fifty eight on four Alder Person Districts and eight Alder Persons with two Alder Persons representing each district. At that time, this population of Sun Prairie was less than four thousand people. So each district would have been a little under a thousand people. Fast forward to today, we're now having each district contains nine thousand people. And soon will be ten thousand people. And that's essentially like having the entire council being elected at large in a city of ten thousand people, what we have now, because each one of these districts is essentially a city. So the the recommendation of the task force is to double the number of districts. Not double double the number of Alder Persons, double the number of districts, but have one Alder Person represent each district. And that will bring down the number of people within each district to approximately four thousand five hundred. But that will be, you know, it won't be long before the city's population is forty thousand, in which case, if it's eight, each district contains five thousand, will contain five thousand. And if it's four, each each district will contain ten thousand. So scrolling down into the Task Force's report, there is this table that shows how Sun Prairie's City Council composition compares to the composition of city councils of other comparably sized cities in Wisconsin. And you will notice that Sun Prairie i- in terms of number of of people per district is almost the largest of any of the cities on that list. The only the only one with more is that the city of Beloit doesn't have Alder Person Districts. They elect all their Alders at large. So but of all of the ones that that have Alder Person Districts, Sun Prairie has the largest number of people per district. So that again, the 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 task force is recommending changing to have one Alder Person per district so that you can have eight smaller districts. And in the view of the task force, the advantages of that are it's easier for Alder Person and and resident to connect. It's easier for Alder Person to be able to keep track of what all is happening in their district. And it's easier to campaign and have a have a have a successful campaign and get elected if you don't have so many doors to knock on. It's it's less expensive and it's less time consuming. And that may actually encourage more people to be willing to serve, to be willing to run for Alder Person. There certainly are advantages that the that the Task Force recognized to keeping the current system. Those being that, you know, it's it's not unusual to have two people that you can turn to for representation at the state level. Your each of us is represented by someone in the state senate and someone in the state assembly. We've got two people to go to, not just one. And so that's the way it is with the current system with our Alder Persons. And second of all, it is frankly easier to find two people to serve in four big districts than it is to find you know, one person to serve in in each of eight districts. And so that I know that was a concern of of Alder Stocker when when we discussed this at the at the task force level. So that's the recommendation of the task force. I I can briefly touch on the results of the community survey, but I don't know if anybody wants or needs that. I'm prepared to talk about that if anybody is. But at this point, I for the sake of brevity, I'll close and allow people to ask questions. I will point out to you all that I just sent you an email with a suggested motion that you can make in response to this task force report. The the motion I'm suggesting is noncommittal. It doesn't, it doesn't say we're 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 on board with making the change the task force recommends. Rather, we want to, we want to take a look at what eight, I want a map of eight Alder Person Districts would look like before we make any decision. That's the gist of my suggested motion that I would appreciate if somebody would make after we get done with the a question and answering and conversation. So with that, I'll close and and it'd be available to answer questions.
Thank you, Bill. Yeah, before we move on, I just want to recognize and thank the members of the redistricting task force. Those members being, of course, Bill Connors, Steve Sabaki, Luke Rollins, Shayna Lovings, Mark Bremer, Alder Stevens, myself, and then of course, coordinating everything was Elena. She was a very key play player in this because she has all the updated data if we do redistrict. And then, of course, goes without saying, Mr. Oppenheimer and his leadership. So want to thank members of the task force for meeting and getting us this far. So we are going to open it up for discussion. I would like to start and ask as a member of the task force, and I don't want to pick on Alder Stevens, but would you be willing to speak? I know our votes were different. And again, the vote was like, I think five, two or something, two. I was one of the two. But I know you had one of the sides of it. If we could hear your side, maybe possibly, or what you gleaned out of being on this task force.
Well, what I learned that really stood out to me was when our other manicist boundaries were created. So at the time, they were around the same size as what we're proposing by moving to eight districts instead of four districts. So the idea that you know, there wouldn't be enough people, didn't really resonate with me because that's that was the size of our original districts of how many people lived in those districts. I also found it interesting to learn that really just that number and seeing how many people we are serving now compared to what we could be. It is hard to reach out to nearly nine thousand people in an election and not only in an election, but when you're serving. I know I don't know nine thousand people in my district. I don't even know that I know nine thousand people in the city as a whole. So I, there's a lot of pros to it. And I think in the surveys, learning how many people don't know that they have two Alders. They tend to think they only have one. So until they go to the city website and have an issue, are they really learning, oh, I have two people I can reach out to? And while it can be helpful to have a second person to bounce ideas and questions off of, it can lead to confusion too, if they email both Alders and one responds but doesn't copy the other, it's kind of redundant. So there's a lot of pros in my opinion of moving to this idea of creating eight districts instead of our current system.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, and I I will say, Bill, you've done an excellent job as as far as as you read through the packet for all of us and the task force, noting the pros and the cons of of moving in this direction. I'll, well, yeah, I I agree with Alder Stevens that, you know, representation may be more advantageous to a smaller number. My my vote against it was that my fear was that we're putting the city at risk. And what I mean by that is it's a risk that when we subdivide a district right now, will we have another person that would be available or want to run as an alder for that new carved out district? Would they be willing to step forward? As as Bill pointed out in one of the cons, that, you know, what we're doing essentially is we're narrowing the narrowing the net, so to speak, as far as who may want to be on the council. Whereas if we have a larger footprint, we have more people who would be available or maybe want to join the council. So we don't have it as narrowed as as it could be. And so my fear was finding another person. And so my fear was finding another person. If we leave it as two alders per di- district, or if we make it one alder for eight districts. Finding a person for that district, it makes it a tougher. Um, find, I guess. The other is, I think with Alder Polinsky being away, um, tonight. It's a prime example of if we have eight alders and eight districts and items come before us. That, um, are impactful. There is no representation. For that district, so, um, let's say Alder Polinsky was, um. I know she shares it with Alder Bowling right now, but let's say she was. District eight, um, Alder Bowling would have Alder or, uh, District four, but there would be nobody representing District eight tonight. And that, uh, that I think would be a, a shame for those residents in that district. So again, for me, it's all about risk and are we putting? Um. Putting the council at risk by not having the. Proper representation, even though I know it would be a smaller representation. So I would basically, uh, at this point, like to open it up for discussion. Alder Yokeesh.
Um, I, I do appreciate the work the committee did on, on this and thanks to Bill for leading this, uh, uh, study. Um, certainly it is a challenge of how we're going to deal with, uh. Larger and larger districts, larger number of people in the districts going forward. I, I find that challenging. I wonder, you know, this is unusual in that we're. Voting on, or we will be voting on something that. Uh, directly affects us and that's a little unusual and I wonder if, uh. Uh, how other, if other municipalities have had to deal with this, I mean, have referendums? A- and if you don't know the answer to this, we can, you know, maybe something we'll look at in the future, but. Could we, would a referendum be appropriate to, uh, uh, ask the people? Uh, how, do you know how other municipalities have dealt with this? I don't, I'm not sure who I'm pointing to, maybe Bill or Aaron.
I, I can, I can answer, the, the only one I know of is Madison. Uh, Madison had a. A task force that made a variety of recommendations and changes to their. Um, to their governance, so they were gonna go from, the recommendation of that task force was to go from. Twenty part-time alders to ten full-time alders. And, uh, increase the, the term to four years. And make another number of other changes and, uh. Ultimately, I, I, my understanding from the advice from the Madison city attorney was that would have had to have been. Any change like that would have had to have been approved by a binding referendum of the. Of the. You know, of the, of the voters of, of Madison, but I, I don't, you know, that may be peculiar to Madison. But at any rate, the, the, what the Madison common council decided to do. Was to put this out for a, a non-binding advisory referendum. Um, and, uh, the, the voters voted against almost all the proposed changes to the task force.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess the only other thing I can add, Alder Yokeesh, is the council can always go out for an advisory referendum. If, if the council would like to do that. I think one of the, the challenges and maybe the folks that served on the redistricting task force would agree. Is there would have to be a significant education. Uh, component of that advisory referendum to make sure that, that people were aware of, of the pros, the cons. You know, whatever materials, uh, folks would, would need to be made aware of. Uh, you'd want that to precede that referendum so that the, the population, the community. Uh, could weigh in effectively on, on such a referendum.
At the next one point, I think, uh. Uh, I can't imagine the challenges that Bill and the committee had in just trying to survey people on some of this. Uh, it's, it's difficult to ask these kind of. What, what do you think of a hypothetical future kind of thing? Thank you.
Alder Jacobs.
Yeah, starting partially for an answer to, to Bob's question, according to Bill's history of this, the council once did this themselves. That's how they became the council. And, um, a few years ago, the council voted itself a raise. So if you're talking about politically muddy waters, if they can vote themselves a raise, they can vote themselves out of districts or whatever. Um, I find, I, I didn't expect to say this, but I'm gonna say it anyway. I'm kind of surprised that Bill's the only member of the task force here. Anytime we've had task force in the past, they've been so supportive of what they've worked on, they've made sure that their voices were known and. That certainly happened with sustainability, happened when I was on the transit committee, so I'm a little surprised by that. But still, I wanna, I wanna thank them for putting forth their time. And while they're not here to hear it, maybe they'll hear this later. Agreeing to work on this when it was known to be, or known to lack support on the council demonstrates, um. Their sincerity. So I have three arguments against why I would be voting for such a thing, or even voting for Bill's proposal to us. Um, I have a contemporary argument, which isn't terribly strong, but it deserves to be heard. I have a very practical argument and then I have a theoretical argument. Let me start with a contemporary argument very briefly. And that is, right now, I know that there are, um, some very good working relationships among alders in the same district. I can, Steve and Terry, of course, Maureen and I for years, and, and certainly others in the past, um. Uh, Mary's Not Here type, or her and Al, even though they were politically very different, worked very close together. Um, same thing with George Frank and I, we were wildly different, but we complemented each other in many ways. Some people felt more comfortable talking to him, some people felt more comfortable talking to me. We bounced ideas off each other and I was grateful for, um, for him, and so I liked that idea. Now here's a practical reality. We have a few lo- local, and I emphasize word local, difficult issues. Sidewalks and apartments. And you know what, let me tell you, I know it's difficult to be outnumbered six to two, I've faced it many times. It's gonna be very lonely when it's seven to one. You know, that's a bad, that's a bad place to be putting someone representing people. All right, so. W- w- we asked the line to roar when it wasn't ready to roar. Less than one half of one percent of the Sun Prairie population said that they favor this. And then only when they were pressed with the idea, only when it was put in front of them, not they didn't come out seeking this. Changing a policy that's been in place for sixty-plus years. Without any agitation to do so is the definition of intrusive government. If there were a problem, we should solve it. I have never heard that this was a problem. But we shouldn't go out inventing problems to be solved when we have real issues to deal with that people do contact us about. I have never had a constituent tell me, boy, it sure is hard getting a hold of you. Has anyone, raise your hand, has anyone on the council ever heard that from a constituent? I can never reach you, where are you? So let's not prob- sol- solve problems that don't exist. Now, the last part is just a theoretical one. This all, as someone just used, I think Bob used the word hypothetical. This was all hypothetical because there has not been an outpouring of dissatisfaction. So let me offer another hypothetical. What if we had this question on the survey? Do you appreciate foul body odor? I am sure the answer would be overwhelmingly, no, I don't like stinky body odor. So should this council pass an ordinance against body odor? Of course not. Because while we all agree on it, it's not an actual problem. We're here to solve problems. If it ever becomes a problem, that is. Body odor or district representation, let's do something about it. Until then, let's get out of the city's business.
Thank you, Alder Jacobs, Alder Crombie, and then, uh, Mr. Connors. Yeah, me.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so. I agree with everything that Alder Jacobs was gonna say, I'm not gonna repeat a lot of it. Um, except for the body odor, I, that's kind of, that was very creative. And, um, my question too, though, that I want to bring up is the census report. I know that it was for two thousand twenty. It was supposed to be, um, completed. We were supposed to get the report, I believe, the end of March, I want to say. But I haven't heard anything, I know that it was postponed. But does anybody know when that census report is coming out for the state and local governments? Or maybe I missed it.
Elena, I think you're probably closest to it.
Um, it, it's been talked about quite a bit, it's all we know right now is that it's delayed.
Okay, okay. Thank you, that's all I wanted to say, ask.
Okay, Mr. Connors, and you're on me, there you go.
Yes, I, I just, I, I have, I can't put my hands on it right now, but I have a, a recollection that. That there was, there, I know there was a state statute that, that. Authorized the incorporation. Of, uh, no, that was the. That was the village, sorry. Um, there, there was a, a referendum in conjunction with the, the change to being a city. I, I think that did get approved by the voters somehow. Uh, but I don't know that the composition of the council was something they voted on. Uh, but I seem to remember looking at the, the newspaper articles from that period of time. And there was some sort of vote by the voters. To say we want to be a city rather than a village, so I just wanted to share that. I think, I'm pretty sure that's the case.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Alder Bowling.
Thank you, um. Okay. Just a few thoughts. I. I was, when I was reading and I was looking at some of the feedback at the, um, bottom of the, uh, document. There was a couple of times it was mentioned about a fifth district. Can you hear me?
You're kind of breaking up, but we can hear you now.
Ah, God.
We heard that.
Um, was the idea of the fifth district with two alders? Okay, and so then I also wanted to lift up the unintended impact of the composition. Looking at representation, thinking about, you know, if we did go to. One alder, one built to, into entry of representation as an alder. Um, thinking about, um, from an equity standpoint, so that was something that I'd like for us to also consider. And then I do have the question, because. Mary and I are not far in regards to our, where we live. Is, you know, what would happen if two alders, you know, end up in that same district? So there would have to be some thought to that. But if the, and when I'm listening to the conversation. I'm just taking notes, representation is really what the pain point is. And what we've, we've talked about it in a couple of different dimensions and I saw that in the feedback. So it could be that, you know, this survey was really good information for us to hear. We're hearing that there's this desire, even though we have more people. Nine thousand is a lot of people. Could, there, there be some creative solutions in regards to how do we represent nine thousand? Reach outreach to nine thousand and bring back information for nine thousand? And maybe we're getting ahead of ourselves by the redistrict or the composition, um. Maybe not, but I think that that's another opportunity this work has brought forward.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any other comments? Alder McElroy.
Thank you, Chair. Um, first of all, Mike Jacobs, I think you hit the nail on the head. Um, secondly, I think. That being a new alder would be more difficult. If we were serving our own district. And we did not share a district. Um, I know for me. Alder Stocker. Was right there. Every step of the way, if I had any questions whatsoever, I think it saved a lot of calls to staff. Um, that I would have been making if it hadn't been for Alder Stocker. Guiding me and telling me who to call or giving me the answer that I needed. Um, I think that's probably the only thing that wasn't covered. In everybody else's comments is if you are a new alder. Um, it's certainly easier if you have a partner. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? If not, um. If you have seen your email, um, Mr. Connors has offered three different, uh, motions. If anyone feels comfortable with those, or if you would like to make your own. Um, I do like the fact that, uh. The committee of the whole does receive the task force report. Um, I think that should be part of it and how it plays out as far as. How you feel if it stays as it is. With the possibility of future changes. Um, or if you want to change now. I think, uh, what you've done, Bill, is you've given us, uh, three really good options. I see your hand up, would you like to comment?
Yes, I, thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Council President. Actually, my, my motion, it wasn't, I wasn't suggesting. Three different possible motions, I was suggesting one motion with three different parts to it.
Oh, okay, I see.
Yeah, so that was, that was, I'm, I'm suggesting that as kind of a, a compromise that. You're not taking any action now, but you're, you're allowing the, the clerk to work on bringing you a draft map with eight districts so you can. See what that will look like.
Okay.
And, and I, and I, you know, the, the. The clerk will have to. Even if you stick with four alderperson districts, come up with eight districts for voting pla- polling places anyways.
Okay, so. I think it's time for a motion, who would like to make the motion?
There doesn't have to be a motion, someone has to actually make a motion, Bill Connors can't make a motion. We might just move on to the next item if no motion is made.
Okay. But I guess I would like to ask if there's, if there's a motion, if not, if it would fail and move on. Alder Stevens.
I, I think it would be only appropriate to vote on this, as we did have a committee, this body. Empowered them to go forth and spend a lot of time and effort on this, um, so I am going to make a motion. Um. To Bill Connor's recommendation and one of these came out of our task force recommendation was that. The committee of the whole receives the task forces report. We will not take action at this time on the recommendation. The committee of the whole requests that during redistricting process, the city clerk's office prepares a draft map. Of eight alderperson districts, each containing a polling place for the city council to consider at a later date. Um, and possibly combine pairs of these districts to create four alderperson districts. And lastly, to. Um, the composition of the Sun Prairie city council will continue to be. Eight other persons representing four districts with two other persons representing each district. Again, unless we take further action in the future.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We have a move in a second. Elena, could you please take, take the role?
Bowling? Hi.
Actually, we're not at that point, we're at the point of discussion, Mr. Council President.
Okay, any further discussion?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I actually, I have a, a little bit more to say. Um, uh, two, two things that I didn't say at first, I just thought of while the people were talking. You know, a, a good portion of those who responded to the survey, and, and by the way, I want to say that I talked to Steve Sabaki. When I was doing the council playback and. He was on the task force and he, and he and I were in agreement at the time that, uh, we were both opposed to it. So he changed his mind and I, I asked him, I said, Steve, I gotta know why you changed your mind? Because that was the one thing that could change my mind, is having explained to me why someone who thought the way I did changed their mind. And he said, well, he said I wasn't very strong on it, I, I feel, I think he feels okay, we talked about this publicly, so I think he feels okay me saying this. Um, but he said that there were comments that, um, led him to say, well, okay, there's some people who are concerned about this. But a good portion of those who responded. Had unrelated axes to grind. And this was their open venue, if you read all those comments, very few of them had anything to do with this. They had to do with a lot of gripes they had otherwise. Like gripe number fifty-eight, Bill, you remember that one? Because it was about you personally, sorry, my friend. So, you know, I would tell you, someone as, as a college professor, I give student surveys at the end of every semester. And the students that you hear from the most are the students who either loved you or hated you. And that's the same thing with the survey, you only heard from people who really had something that they wanted to say. And again, I want to point out that not only did less than half of them agree with the recommendation. But those who responded anyway were responding for different reasons. I want to say more, I want to think about being in a district by yourself and, and Terry hit that on the head as, as far as. Being, you know, by yourself. There's an alder who preceded all of us on this council except for Mary. Who was infamous for when votes came up that were going to be sensitive. In his district and he didn't share their view, he conveniently went to get a Coke. And gosh darn, he just wasn't there for that vote, so he couldn't be counted against it. Or he was gonna be out of town on business that day. You know what, that's, because that's what happens when you feel like you're by yourself, you start doing things that we really otherwise wouldn't do. I think that we've relied on each other and that's been a good thing. And that's why I'm gonna oppose any change at this time unless people come forward and say, I want to change this.
Okay, any- Okay. Any other further discussion? Alder Stevens.
Yes, I think that this current motion is a fair compromise in that we're not actually taking action. It's just allowing us to see what a map could look like and to create additional conversations amongst this body and with residents who weren't even aware of um, our survey that went out. Granted, we were doing it during COVID. So this may be new to a lot of people just tuning in. Um, so I don't want to shut the door entirely on any work or any progress or any idea that maybe it's not this year, maybe it's ten years from now, but at least we can see what it might look like. And it gives the next group who feels really passionately about this a starting point. But otherwise, we're not changing anything. We're staying as is.
Alder Jacobs and then Alder Yoke.
Yeah, I just want to, uh, I just want to, I guess I'm happy to use the word rebut here. We're not closing the door by not doing anything. I mean, if we don't vote on this now, it's forever gone. No, there's no door being closed. We're just not going to move on it if we don't agree with it.
Okay, Alder Yoke.
Well, I just want to say that as of right now, I agree with Alder, Alder Jacobs. Uh, that I don't see any compelling reason to move forward with this, but I also agree with Alder Stevens that uh, I think the motion itself to get the information that may be needed for the future is appropriate. And that's why I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. And, and Bill, I, I have to say, I, I like what you've said in your wording. It's noncommittal. We can, for those of you that think everything should stay the same, um, this plays into that. But it doesn't, like Alder Stevens said, doesn't close the door to seeing what, what something else could look like, even though I, I appreciate what we have now and personally would not want to change, but I think this motion is, is a great compromise. So any further discussion? We've got to move on, folks. Alder, Alder McElroy.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I do want to make the statement that um, if we do, if we let Elena put together a map at this point. Five to ten years, that map may not look the same.
Yeah. Okay.
That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Elena, would you please read the role?
Bowling? Hi. Crombie?
Hi.
Jacobs?
No.
Yokeesh?
Hi.
McElroy?
No.
Stevens?
Hi.
Stocker?
Hi.
Right, and that passes five to two.
Okay, thank you. We are going to move on to our next item, uh, consideration. Uh, discussion of possible action regarding partial return to in-person meeting attendance at meetings transitional phase reopening in-person attendance to members and allowing virtual attendance by members in the public. Adopting rules governing electronic meetings and virtual attendance at meetings and ordinance amending sections two oh eight or two dot oh eight dot one four zero B duties, comma renumbering two dot oh eight dot two thirty to two dot oh eight dot two forty, suspension of rules and creating new section two dot oh eight dot two thirty, rules of procedure.
Mr. President, I'll start off with it. We don't have any material. We just wanted you to read all of that and.
I have it. Yeah.
So we have a memo in your packet that lays out uh, three uh, particular changes that would be necessary in ordinance and two resolutions uh, that would allow hybrid meetings at first and then virtual meetings ongoing. And so we, we believe we've captured what the council was looking for um, as far as kind of that a phased approach uh, to reopening uh, and then allowing uh, elected officials uh, who were traveling or for some reason couldn't be physically present at the meeting to be able to participate virtually moving forward. Uh, Attorney Matt Dragney is with us on the, on the call as well to be able to assist us with the actual um, as far as statutory and other legal language uh, that we need to adhere to. Uh, but we feel we've given you kind of a, a process to uh, allow first hybrid meetings and then virtual meetings. We've also been in discussions with IT and we believe the appropriate technology is in place in the council chambers uh, to be able to carry out hybrid meetings and virtual meetings. Um, and so that would be the only, only uh, physical location uh, where we'd be able to have this technology in place. So we will have to to work around that till other facilities are made available that were, will require some technology uh, to be incorporated into those spaces uh, to make that uh, possible. Um, so we would need to work with boards and commissions and others that are interested in potentially doing these types of meetings. Uh, we'd have to, to schedule around to that uh, one space that's available. So we're happy to, both Attorney Dragney and I are happy to answer any questions, but uh, hopefully we've hit the mark here.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Dragney, thank you very much for accommodating this request. Alder Stevens.
I'd like to make a motion to approve amending sections two point zero eight point one four zero B duties, renumbering two point zero eight point two three zero to two point zero eight point two four zero. Suspension of rules and creating a new section two point zero eight, two point three zero, rules of procedure.
Thank you.
Well done, Alder Stevens.
Yeah. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Moving second. Okay. Now we're going to open it up for discussion. Any questions?
I think we're all ready to come back, Mr. Chair.
Okay, let's find out. Okay, Elena, please take the role.
Bowling? Hi. Crombie?
Hi.
Jacobs?
Hi.
Yokeesh?
Hi.
McElroy?
Hi.
Stevens?
Hi.
Stocker?
Hi.
That passes seven zero.
I think it was eight zero. I heard a dog in the background. Anxious to get their owner out of the house. Okay, next. Thank you very much. Next item, consideration, discussion, possible action regarding the American Rescue Plan Act. Connie.
Yep, I'm going to try to share my screen here. I don't really know how to do it very well.
There we go. We got it.
All right, um, the, uh, this is just a quick overview of the American Rescue Plan. Um, we're going to just talk about a little bit about what's in it. Um, that's related to the city of Sun Prairie. We have some projects that the staff have um, thought about and are proposing. They're not fully, not all of them are fully vetted yet, but um, they're ideas that we wanted to bring to your attention. And um, at the end of this, what we're looking for is guidance so that we can hire a grant administrator or contract out for grant administration because there are quite a bit of reporting and regulations that are related to this that are um, the foundation of federal grants. So they're a little bit more complicated. And then um, we also have a community needs study that we'd like to move forward with. Uh, part of the uh, issue that we have with the, the ARPA grants is that you have to identify your hardest hit communities and what your needs are. And then um, and then once you've identified what, how, how the population was harmed and where that population exists, you can develop programs to meet those needs. So that's pretty much what we're uh, going forward with. I do want to make sure you're aware that the ARPA grants is really designed to meet the needs of the community, community, the economy. And then if the city has any lost revenue to assist with this, the city's um, budget. The CARES Act that we received in twenty twenty was um, really designed to assist the city in meeting um, its physical requirements for mitigating a pandemic. If, that was more internal and this grant is more external. So um, we have received our first uh, payment of one point eight million dollars and we should receive our second payment in June of twenty twenty-two. Um, at a minimum, the city has to commit or contract for all of the funds by the December of twenty twenty-four. And then all of the checks have to be written by December of twenty twenty-six. So there's four areas that the grant covers. Um, those are to replace lost revenue for local government, to respond to the health emergency, the public health emergency and its negative impacts, to respond to workers performing essential work during COVID nineteen public health emergency, and to make necessary investments in water sewer or broadband infrastructure. So there are two areas related to the public health, response to the public health emergency and then negative economic impacts. And we're going to start out with the negative economic impacts for the hardest hit communities. The first step that we um, feel needs to happen is we really need to contract for grant administration. Um, that will ensure that we stay in compliance with the regulations and we can meet our reporting requirements for the grant. The second step is to do the community needs analysis so that we can identify areas in the city that were hardest hit. Um, those tend to be low to moderate income or minority communities um, so that we can um, focus and uh, our funding to those areas and the harm that was committed to, that was in those areas. The grant program does require that we identify if a harm exists in our um, hardest hit communities. Then we have to um, determine if that harm was a product of COVID nineteen. And then we have to develop a program um, where we're going to spend our funds to mitigate that harm that we've identified. So the community needs analysis is pretty um, critical for the programs. So the grant, the guidelines do go into a lot of detail about what the hardest hit communities are. And if a, uh, if you have a qualified census tract, that is automatic um, need, we, you don't have to do any additional work on that. But the needs enough, now, we have obviously other areas that have been hurt. And so we um, need the needs analysis to identify how to map those areas. The program does automatically assume that unemployment was caused by COVID nineteen. So if we provide assistance to anybody who is unemployed, it's an automatic assumption. So this is a qualified census tract that's in the city of Sun Prairie. It um, has approximately four thousand people, people in the five, four thousand people in the tract. These are a list of projects that um, staff have come up with that meet um, this particular program. And um, a lot of these are estimates because we have round numbers from previous programs. And then estimating the amount of um, financial assistance per household or per person. Um, but those could obviously change once the community need, needs analysis is completed. The second area that we would focus on is uh, support the public health response and um, that's assistance mitigating COVID nineteen. So in this particular case, we do, are able to make capital investments to public buildings for air filtration or, or Plexiglas barriers. And we have included um, the Colonial Club's request for air filtration assistance. This is a list of the um, possible expenditures in that arena. And um, that will be uh, fine tuned um, if those programs are approved. The last area that we're going to look at, or the third area we're going to look at is replacing lost public sector revenue. And this is really important because when you have lost revenue um, for a local government and you calculate that, let's say your lost revenue was two hundred thousand dollars. The uh, restrictions that are in the ARPA grant do um, go away. You still have to spend the monies. You can't put them in your uh, fund balance, but you can use them for any government service that's provided. The unfortunate thing is, is that the city does not have any lost revenue for twenty twenty. Um, we did have the sale of the Schneider property and that pretty much wiped out everything. But um, and we did look at the twenty twenty-one year and we're predicting that it's unlikely we'll have lost revenue just because we have so many large developments that are coming into, that are in process in twenty twenty-one. A lot will be weighed on the timing of the taking out those permits. Once the budgets pass for twenty twenty-two, we can estimate for twenty twenty-two, but again, until the year is closed and it's actually calculated as final numbers, it really won't be a guarantee. So when you have lost revenue, you are able to spend it on any type of government service. But you can't spend it on uh, debt. You can't spend it on judgments or settlements or on um, fund balance, uh, for savings. So the last area that the city could spend money on is um, investing in water sewer and broadband infrastructure. And these are some examples. The guidance does say that you should look to your state clean water fund and your state drinking water fund um, programs. And those will give you good ideas of what's acceptable for water and sewer projects. And then there's broadband and broadband's a little bit more restrictive. Um, you, the, the idea is that you're providing service um, to the actual citizens, wired service to the actual citizens. Typically, when you have a broadband provider, um, if they have an area that they're not, they know they're going to have a low subscription rate, they may not install the infrastructure to provide um, the internet access. But, and so the city could use those funds to offset that capital cost. I don't know um, how we sit with that at the moment. Um, that, that'll take some research. And then the, this is just a summary of all of the projects that we represented here today. It comes to almost a little over two million dollars of the three point six that we are allocated. Um, but a lot of this again, could be adjusted higher or lower based on what we find out with the community needs assessment. So questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Connie.
You're welcome.
We have to move quickly. So if you have questions, please keep them very short, if you would please. Aldo Yoke.
I just wondering what the timeline is for, I mean, will you be coming back at some point with definitive plans or what the timeline is for that? And then I saw in the municipality magazine, they said one of the things to be careful of is to coordinate or not duplicate with the county and the state and things like that. Uh, any comments on that is appreciated.
So the city plans on, uh, there are some things that we can start off right away. Um, the infrastructure pieces, um, putting in the air, air filtration or things like that, there's not an issue. Um, obviously any programs that we provide for assistance for um, the community. We want to partner with uh, our uh, nonprofits. And when I say pro, partner, we want to contract with them so they actually deliver the service. We would design the program and they would deliver the service. And hopefully that would be um, the way that we would capture duplication of benefits because in Sunshine Place, Janelle is with the county and she works at Sunshine Place delivering the county's benefits. And so hopefully we'd be able to capture that in that regard.
Okay, any other questions? So are you looking for action on this, Connie?
We're looking for approval to begin um, an RFP or hiring process for grant administrations and to begin an RFP process for a community needs assessment.
Okay. So is anyone willing to make that motion?
I have a question.
Yes, Alder Stevens.
Uh, where would the new position live? Which department?
Good question. Um, we haven't really developed the scope of the program. Typically those.
And make it, yeah.
Typically, they would reside either in administration or in finance. Um, the real, the real challenge that we have is um. Following the regu- federal regulations and the reporting requirements. So if that is the main goal of the administration, it would reside in finance.
Okay.
Good question. Okay, any other questions? I think just looking at this uh, over the weekend, there were some things that. Looks like it might lend well into Alder Jacobs Sustainability Committee also. As far as water reuse and and things like that, so. Looks like there's opportunities. Okay, so.
I'm just trying to figure out how to unshare, so just.
Let's, you're okay. Anybody like? For the grant?
While you're doing that, I did have my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Your your screen is.
Oh, I'm just. Yeah, I just, sorry, thank you. I just wanted to add this into in the equation with the housing crisis and the eviction memorandum ending. Very, really quickly here. I don't know what considerations are given in regards to the um, eviction prevention. Programs potentially if that would also cover foreclosures, but something I wanted to get on the radar.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we need to move forward here on the grants. Is that, is that what you're looking for tonight, correct, Connie?
That's correct.
So would anybody be willing to make a motion to? Move forward?
Uh, weren't there two motions that we were?
Grant administration and the community needs assessment.
I'd like to move both of those forward.
Okay.
And I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a move in second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Elena, would you please take the role?
Polling?
Hi.
Crombie?
Hi.
Jacobs?
Hi.
Yokeesh?
Hi.
McElroy?
Hi.
Stevens?
Hi.
Sacker?
Hi.
And that carries seven zero.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move through this real quick. Reporter of the council president, real quick. Congratulations again to our state champs and runner-up in in so- in baseball and softball. I know Alder Jacobs was down there for the celebration of our state champs baseball team. Um, great job for our youth. Uh, Splash Pad has been mentioned a few times tonight. I really appreciate the turnout from the Alders. Uh, good representation for those of you that could make it. And if you happen to be going by there, I went by there again at noon today. And it is phenomenal. It is very well attended, so if you want to. Um, ever look at wondering, or if you ever think back after you voted on something, whether it was a good decision or not. Here's a prime example. There's a lot of attendance there. Real quick on the Adam Bucci project, uh, for those of you that may or may not know. Uh, when digging the puddings, um, they found approximately a five hundred gallon tank. Uh, with some liquids in it. Um, luckily, they found it and they're going to be removing it because they had it been down another foot. That might have been uh, on top of some puddings and eventually we would have had a leaning tower of pizza in our city and uh. That would not have been good. So anyway, um. Yeah, so anyway, that uh, that will not uh, that will not happen and Adam's moving forward. Good news is the the ground uh, that we had thought was contaminated didn't show as much contamination if any. As we thought, so I think the funds will be used to remove that tank and get that out of there. Friday nights at the Y starts this Friday. And if you can uh, get down to City Hall, if you haven't already, there's a comprehensive annual financial report in a Sun Prairie. Water pollution control facility financial statement supplementary information report in your mailboxes. Mr. Oppenheimer, reporter, the city administrator.
Yeah, I had several items, but in the interest of time, I'll just mention one, and that is that the libraries resume regular hours as of yesterday. Several services are available, including browsing collections, in-person holds and pickups. Uh, computer use, printing, faxing and scanning, and the Read Before bookstore is open, so. Leave you with that, Mr. President.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any referrals? Sweater, thanks. Thank you for opening up. Any referrals? Hearing none. Move to look for a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion for adjourn.
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Jacobs, second.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll see you in just a few minutes. Thank you, everyone.